If anyone could please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Can the clerk read the roll call, please?
Mayor Marciano.
Here.
Vice Mayor Lit.
Here.
Councilmember Moreno.
Here.
Councilmember Woods.
Here, ma'am.
Councilmember Lane.
Here.
Thank you. Are there any additions, deletions, or modifications to the agenda?
No, sir.
Well, we have a couple of announcements and presentations tonight, so I would like to first introduce or ask Rich Bartholomew from the League of Women Voters to please come up and please state your name and tell us what's going on.
I'm Rich Bartholomew. I'm the Chair of the Census Committee of the League of Women Voters here in Palm Beach County, and we want to express our appreciation for this opportunity to talk directly with you about this very important constitutional event that is about to take place here in our county and across the United States. Your residents and perhaps yourselves are going to be surprised by this census. You're going to receive notifications beginning March 12th in the mail, asking you to respond, not in the way that everybody is familiar with, by mail, but by electronic devices, by computer, by smartphone, by telephone. There will be a very concerted effort to get as many people as possible to respond electronically, and this will present a number of problems and difficulties in getting the best possible count. The information that people will be able to enter, they can start literally doing it on March 12th. All they'll have to say is the number of people who are expected to be living at their address on April 1st, but responses will actually begin on March 12th. This will be a surprise. There'll be a lot of questions. I'm sure you'll hear from your constituents about this. People who are worried about being hacked, people who have had bad experiences with computers, who don't have computer access, will all be having difficulties with these new instructions. Now, there's a whole series of people that we know are going to be hard to count. And those are going to start with senior citizens, and then it's going to include people like me, snowbirds, who will be leaving here before the actual mailed census response that they're used to arrives at their house. It'll be probably coming in after the religious holidays in April. So the response that they're familiar with and most comfortable with may well be missed by a significant portion of your population, but that mail will be waiting for them at their summer home, wherever they're going in the summer season. Young children are another very important target group. For reasons we do not understand, people tend not to report the youngest children in their families. Yet with so much education funding depending on the census numbers, those children that are missed are going to be in our schools in very short order. So it's very critical that we concentrate on counting those young children. The handicapped renters, of whom there are more than there were 10 years ago, are among those hardest to count. They move more, they're at different addresses. We have to target those groups. Now, the city has not been asleep on this issue. You've formed, as has been recommended by the League of Cities, a good complete count committee. You're active, you're publishing information in your magazine, and we think you're doing the right things. But the reason I've come to speak to you tonight is that you are the elected leaders of this place. You have a special understanding of this place, a block-by-block understanding of your districts, of the economy, of the people in this place. As leaders, you are what the Census Bureau is urgently looking for. They're looking for the trusted voices in this community, and those trusted voices include you, they include clergymen, they include the business leaders that your residents work for. So it's very, very important that the elected leadership, the leadership of this place, take a proactive role. Now, you can do a lot of things that other people can't do. You have so much public contact, you can remind people, you can give people information about where to go and get information, you can try to overcome some of their concerns about responding electronically, which by the way, will be the absolutely safest way to respond to the census. A few lessons have been learned in recent years about hacking and things like that, and the census will have the absolutely most sophisticated encryption and security systems available. And responding electronically will also take away the problem of waiting for the mail, missing for us, snowbirds, and the knock on the door that will occur at all the addresses where no response has been received from by May. You can mention it in your press releases, you can talk about it in your social media accounts, you have mailings, you have newsletters, you can give web links that can help inform your populace, the people that support you, the people that got you elected, in a very special way. There's an organization, there's a designation that a number of municipal officials in Florida have already joined. It's called the Census Champions. They're linked for elected officials to declare their own leadership and to be active in their communities. A number of municipal officials in Florida have already joined. You have information on your desk about how to do that if you'd like to. We'd certainly like you to do it. It will feed you information, it will give you more tools to boost the census in the next 60 days before things get really serious about response. Now, every one of the people in your town, every one of the people that you represent, your constituents, has a terrific stake in this census. These numbers are going to get baked into public and private databases for 10 years. We have no clue just how much private investment, how many jobs are going to be driven by the census numbers, that it will be the baseline going forward. There will be annual estimates, but this is the baseline from which they're going to proceed. Every legislative district, including yours, is going to change based on these numbers. It's also going to change the representation you have in the state legislature for your jurisdiction. Those lines are going to move, so the bigger the turnout you have, the bigger the response you have, the more representation you're probably going to get at the state level. Billions of federal dollars are going to be distributed every year. Now, there's a lot of numbers floating around. I'm going to give you a number that I'm using, it's not the official number, but I think it's a pretty good one, and I believe it's very conservative. I believe that for every person counted in Florida, using a universe of $1.5 trillion in federal funds that's going to have census formulas attached to it, for every person that's counted, about $2,500 is going to come into Florida each year. For every person not counted, those $2,500 per year will not be arriving, and that'll have a big impact, above all, in the area of healthcare, education, infrastructure, and something that's very important here in Florida, emergency services. Census data is used for emergency services before and during hurricanes. This is quite important. If you talk to the new head of emergency services for the state, he can explain it to you. Now, you know better than anybody else in the room, probably, how your jurisdiction has grown since 2010. That's not the issue. The issue is how many of those folks are going to respond to the census and give an accurate count of your jurisdiction? That's the challenge before us. We don't have a lot of time left, so we've come to you. We're very confident in the efforts that your staff are making, we're participating in your complete count committee, we know you're doing the right things, but there's not much time left. You probably saw the story in The Post that the county lost $1.5 billion due to a 7% undercount. Now, in 2010, we know that census responses have been going down each 10 years for the last 30 years, and we know that the new methods of responding and the timing of the mailed-in responses is going to have a significant effect here in Florida. So we're asking you to provide leadership. We're here to help you in any way we can. Candace knows exactly where to find us, we have materials that we put out that you can use. We hope you put links into every public activity that you do so that people can get more information, have some confidence, have some comfort in responding to the census, online, by phone, by mail, but remember, the mail is going to come very late. I'd be happy to take any questions from you or anybody else. I really thank you for this opportunity to address this critical public issue.
Thank you, Rich. I appreciate the presentation. It was very good, and I think people just need to remember why the census is happening. It's not to collect personal data on everybody, but it's already out there anyway, so hacking is a reality in our world, so I don't see this as being any additional threat, but certainly the more people that can respond, the better. So whatever we can do to help, I'll certainly be passing it along through my social media posts, and I'm sure the rest of the council will as well, and we'll encourage everyone. Does anyone have any questions?
I have one. Will we be able to get buttons or something that we can wear around that says, "I did my census, did you?" or something like that? Will we have some?
"I voted," right.
Kind of like the "I voted," but yeah, you just wear it.
Tomorrow morning, we're having a meeting about that, actually. There are some stickers that say "2020 Matters," which you are particularly familiar with, which is one way of doing it. We're going to see how we can link up census awareness to the primary and municipal elections that will be taking place simultaneously as all this census information arrives in people's mailboxes. We're looking at a button or a sticker, and we'll see what we can do to respond to that. You have a Gmail address on the information that you've been given. If you write to me, we'll try to give you any kind of information sources that are available, either from us or from the census, or from the other players. The county is taking a very active role, as you know.
Thank you very much. I appreciate your presentation.
Thank you.
Next presentation or announcement is the Honda Classic Committee.
Good evening, Council. Charlotte Przynski, somebody's moving the mouse. Thank you, Candace. Charlotte Przynski, Leisure Services Administrator. It is that time of the year, the Honda Classic is around the corner, and as we do every year, on your consent agenda tonight is the Public Safety Grant for the event, it's the same as you've always done. But to give you more information about the Honda Classic and actually the tremendous impact that it brings to our community and all of South Florida, we have Ken Kennerly with us tonight, Executive Director, and Andrew George, our Tournament Director, and they're both going to come up and they have a presentation for you.
Thanks for being here.
As we do each and every year, Andrew's got to get it started for me. Ken Kennerly, Executive Director of the Honda Classic. Before we get into the presentation, I've got to thank you all, the City of Palm Beach Gardens, for 13 fabulous years, really 17. We weren't involved when it was at Marisol, but Mayor and Vice Mayor and Council Members, thank you. It's been a wonderful 13 years. We're going on year 14 here at PGA National under our leadership, and you know, without the great partnership that we have with the City of Palm Beach Gardens and your tremendous staff and team, we certainly wouldn't be, you know, where we are in the world and, you know, the commitment and the dedication that we've been able to give to these charities. I've also got to thank, you know, the Police Department and the great Fire Department for everything you guys have done for us each and every year. We have great meetings and the collaboration is absolutely fantastic, so thank you for all that. There we go, there we go. Okay, you know, Honda, we talk about it every year, they are the longest-running sponsor on the PGA Tour. This is their 39th year. Next year, of course, will be year 40. As I said, the longest-running consistent title sponsor on the PGA Tour. We had another Honda call again this afternoon. They're thrilled, they're looking forward to coming back. Obviously, they bring, you know, 100 dealers plus, a lot of visitors and tourists that come into South Florida. Some of the 19 notables, this is always kind of fun. We had a 2.4 rating on Sunday last year when Ricky Fowler and Brooks Koepka challenged Keith, excuse me, and, you know, came in second, so we're really looking forward to another great year. Attendance for the fourth straight year, over 200,000 people came through our gates at PGA National. The economic impact has measured a little over 62 million. We had another record of measured hotel rooms, almost 11,000 measured hotel rooms, which was a 17% increase. The American Honda Birdies for Children program raised a little over 2.5 million, and that's a program that we reach out to 100 local charities as well to participate. Our charitable giving last year, as you may recall from the media, was a little over $5 million back into the community, which we were glad to affect over 75,000 kids and families from that. And of course, that was a little over half a million dollar increase over the year before, and to date, 44-plus million dollars. We hope to eclipse $50 million in the history of the Honda Classic following the 2020 event. The tournament impact, we were fortunate very recently from the PGA Tour to be recognized as the Most Fan First Tournament. We won a similar event a few years ago as the Most Fan Friendly Event on the tour. As you all know from any of our discussions, that's one of our main objectives as we rolled out this new tournament many years ago, is to make sure that our fans, our spectators, our patrons, visitors to the City of Palm Beach Gardens, and of course, our local residents have a great time. We're in the entertainment space, not necessarily the golf space, while of course, golf is at our core. It's all about fun and entertainment and just creating a lot of fun for people to come out there. You know, we talk about the great coverage on television. Let's not forget, I mean, 50-plus hours on Golf Channel NBC, you know, 60 minutes of direct on-air coverage highlighting the City of Palm Beach Gardens, of course, PGA National Resort and Spa, and the County of Palm Beach. So it's an enormous, enormous exposure opportunity for us. We're televised in, you know, close to a billion homes now, potential of a billion homes, over 227 countries, 23 languages on the PGA Tour. It just, it really puts us in a great time of the year, the end of February, early March, when people are cold in different parts of the world, they're seeing the great sunshine, they're seeing the great City of Palm Beach Gardens and everything we have to offer. We've also added, this will be year three for Honda Classic Live, which is our live streaming, which we do outside the ropes. We're not permitted to do it inside the ropes because that's restricted to NBC Sports and the Golf Channel, but we have a live stream that goes outside the ropes. We're trying to, again, build the enthusiasm of this great, of this great tournament, and we're going to embark on that in year three. We're supported by the Television and Film Commission for our Honda Classic Live, the live streaming and all access. So, you know, with that, I'm going to turn it over to Andrew to talk about some of the more exciting things and some of the transitions that we've seen over the years.
Thanks, Ken. And Ken's going to work on all 23 languages for next year's tournament, so we should be good on all those. I'd like to echo what Ken said earlier. I remember, you know, not too many years ago, when we started the planning meetings in January for this event, and now we're looking at, you know, we're 45 days out. These planning meetings across the entire city staff have happened, you know, literally year-round. We started official meetings in September. This has become a well-oiled machine because of everything that the city staff and what you guys have done to support the event. So it's, you know, ultimately, what we're trying to do is bring back to the local community a lot of philanthropy, but it doesn't, doesn't go off without a hitch without all the long hours and the planning and preparation that you guys have put in, so thank you again, as Ken mentioned. And I thought it was, it was fun. It's been a couple of years since we've done this. We remember back to 2007, when we were really excited about the build and the start over at PGA National, we had about 100,000 square feet of tent scaffold. We now have over 350,000 square foot out there on site. But here was 2007 on the 18th hole. This is last year's event, so you can see the growth, obviously, from '07 to '19. And then this was 2007, the 17th hole, the infamous Bear Trap, the last leg of that stretch across the water, that was the EPO Pavilion and the Sky Suites. This, again, we celebrated, I think it was about 2,000 square feet at the Bear Trap, and was, as we quote, crazy back in 2007. As you look at it today, here's the 17th hole from the tee, here's the 16th hole where the Bear Trap, you know, now 40,000 square feet of tent scaffold out there, accommodating about 5,000 people at any one time. So, again, the support that you guys have put together for us has made this all possible, and we're excited about what comes ahead in 2020. As we, you know, as Ken mentioned, the Most Fan First event comes with 20 different public structures out on site across nine different holes. So it's a, it's a fun event, it's a community event, and certainly something that we take pride in from the beginning of the build to the end. And as I mentioned, and Ken talked about the numbers, but the impact is what we live for every day, we get up and focus on. All the decisions we make, you know, whether it's on the course or off, is surrounded by the Honda Classic Cares impact. Last year, 5.1 million to over 130 different charities, and as Ken talked about, we're pushing towards 50 million since the inception of the Honda Classic, certainly unrivaled on the PGA Tour and something we, again, take pride in here in Palm Beach Gardens. And I would like to mention, you know, Nicholas Jordan's Healthcare Foundation has been our primary beneficiary since 2007. Last year, we did give him a check for the fourth straight year, over $1 million, 1.1 million back to Jack and Barbara and all the impact they're making in South Florida. They're now touching over 120 different countries through the hospital in Miami and through the outpatient centers we have around the region. Of course, we've got one here right in Palm Beach Gardens. But I did want to close with a quick video. Last year, the 1.1 million was going towards bringing a mobile dental unit up here to Palm Beach Gardens that would go around town and help those that are less fortunate than us. If I can get it to work.
Thanks to the Honda Classic Cares, we have been able to serve this month alone around 100 children in the Palm Beach County area. The mobile unit serves children from 0 to 12 years of age. These children are uninsured and in underserved areas.
We normally see around between 25 and 30 kids a day.
In the mobile unit, we provide different services. We do preventive and emergency services. We do oral examinations, radiographs, fluoride, sealants, extractions, and silver diamine fluoride, which is an agent that helps arresticate.
Our team consists of a pediatric dentist and two dental assistants. We go to the sites, start registering the kids, and from there, x-ray, exam, cleanings, and we take care of them.
By providing these dental services, we're actually helping also the general health of our patients. They have come sometimes swollen, in pain, the kids are not eating or sleeping, and after we provide these services, the children actually are sleeping or eating better, their quality of life improves, and we become a dental home and they follow up with us every six months.
We have been covering Dade County, Monroe County, Broward County, and now, thanks to the Honda Classic Care, we are expanding our services to the Palm Beach County.
So again, as our primary beneficiary, Nicholas Jordan's Hospital and the foundation there is a big part of what we do, but it's just a few of the kids of the 75,000 that are impacted right here in Palm Beach County. So again, from our staff and everything that we're doing on a day-to-day basis, we thank all of you for everything that you guys do to make the Honda Classic great here in the community. So thank you.
Thank you all very much. Appreciate your support.
Thank you, guys. You know what, the buzz that just starts to surround the city around this time of year is pretty impressive. You'd think that there'd be a little bit of Honda Classic fatigue after all the years, but it just gets bigger and bigger and better and better every year, which is really, really great. And that's not just coming from me, but just talking to my friends and colleagues. Everyone wants to find a way how to get tickets.
There's never fatigue in a party.
No, well, that's my point. I mean, you guys have done a fantastic job making it a really fun place to be, and I got two things, and I'll let you guys take it from there, but, you know, we talk about the impact that it has to the city with the national, international marketing. My neighbors across the street moved here this year because they were living in DC and they were looking for a place in Florida to live, and they saw the Honda Classic last year, and they bought my neighbor's house across the street. So, and they're a wonderful family, too, so thank you for having, letting them come down here. That's a pretty neat story. And secondly, we need to get an eye clinic as part of your, with the Nicholas Foundation, too.
I'm with you, Mayor. I got the same problem.
Anyone else have any comments you want to make?
Well, I'm going to, of course, I'm going to make a comment. Go ahead, Rochelle.
I just wanted to say thank you. The impact that you make is amazing and all the hard work that goes into it, so thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Really looking forward to it. You all do a great job. Thank you very much.
Well, Ken, and Andrew, you know how close to my heart this event is. I've been an ambassador with you all since you took over and was the first woman invited and the only woman for a very long time, and I do appreciate all you do for our community and especially all you do charitable-wise. People don't realize that PGA Tour events are 501(c)(3), money has to go back to the community, and you've done an extraordinary job, and you've reached so many different agencies that really need the help, so that's the best part of this, so thank you.
Thanks, Mayor. Thank you all.
We're proud.
We just want to, we just want to play and see how bad we're not, we really are, right? So, thank you, guys.
Thank you all so much. And the City of Palm Beach Gardens, thank you, Ron and Charlotte and the rest of this great team. Thank you so much. Max, thank you.
So before I start, the items of resident interest I want to bring up, since our city manager said he doesn't have a report, I'm going to bring up the, I'm going to bring up a few things that are coming up, coming up. So on Saturday, we've got our Public Safety Day at District Park. Please come, it's a great time. Last year was fantastic, and I'm looking forward to it again. And don't forget, for all you runners or non-runners, I'll be running at 7:00 AM for the 5K, and I'll make it. I won't stop, I promise.
It's at District.
At District Park. Number two, right, well, of course, we'd have to add that.
Bench press competition that you're in.
The bench press competition that Carl will be hosting right after that.
I'll be hosting.
On Sunday, on Sunday, we have the 18th anniversary of the green market, the Eric Javelin Green Market, so please come out and be a part of that. It's always a fun day, great green market. And on the 25th, the Motowners right outside. Anything else you got, Ron? Is that good?
Is that your report? That's my report, thank you.
You're welcome. Just trying to move the meeting along a little bit here, so.
Thank you.
All right, Rochelle, do you want?
Drag it out.
Rochelle, do you want to start the comments?
Sure. So first, I'd like to wish a happy, healthy New Year to my fellow council members, the staff, and all the residents of the city.
Healthy?
Healthy, yes, healthy. And may we all be blessed with a year of peace. The year ended with a Jewish Women's Foundation Women of the Year Luncheon. A very good friend of Maria's and mine, Suzanne Holmes, was honored for her great work to our community. There was a Joint Economic Development Government Affairs Committee meeting of the Palm Beach North Chamber. It was an important meeting where they discussed the need for each municipality to do a vulnerability study relating to environmental sustainability. That effort's going to be led by Rick Morell of Tropical Shipping. There was also a very important discussion about whether the Chamber would support in writing our mobility plan and fee, which I'm happy to say, we did get support from the Chamber this week, so we have that in writing. There was Leadership Palm Beach County Holiday Breakfast. I chaired the Palm Beach North Chamber Sustainability Subcommittee meeting and moved plans along for our big Earth Day program on sustainability. It's April 22nd, it'll be at Sand Hill Crane at 11:30, so I hope everybody can come. There was also a Palm Beach North Chamber breakfast before hours, Jewish Community Relations Anti-Semitism Task Force meeting, and I had a lovely time celebrating the holidays and New Year with my family and friends. Took some time off to reflect and to get ready to embark on what I think is going to be a defining year for Palm Beach Gardens. So far this year, January 3rd, Maria and I did a ribbon cutting at a Jackson Hewitt Tax Service on Northlake. We attended the Forum Club at the Kravis Center. It was very interesting, the two journalists who started Politico and Axios. We were there with 600 other members of the community, and the journalists reminded us that in this age of 24-hour news bombardment, that we should pick and choose our news sources wisely, relying only on those sources who have proven their trustworthiness and truthfulness. Don't share anything on social media that you can't verify is true, being there are 180 million bots generating false narratives and information daily, and to be mindful most of what's happening in the areas of artificial intelligence, China, healthcare, and the targeting of online sources to manipulate, obstruct, and distract from the real issues. Yesterday, Dr. Fishkin gave his 2020 economic forecast at the PGA Card Association breakfast and had some very nice things in anticipation of our year for Palm Beach Gardens, and Councilmember Lane and I presented a State of the City update to the Palm Beach Gardens Historical Society. I also attended a program on philanthropy as seen through the gender lens, so it's starting off to be a busy year.
Max? Matthew.
Hey, I'm gonna begin my report with a comment about Assistant City Manager Steve Stepp. Now, our city manager, Ron Ferris, establishes a standard of excellence for this city. And while the city manager was on vacation, I had the occasion to work with Chief Stepp on several issues. He did an excellent job. He took care of the matters immediately. He completely resolved all of the issues that I presented to him, and there were many, and he did so with a smile. He was efficient and more than a pleasure to deal with, so thank you, Steve. Great job with all the issues. A quick highlight of some of the events that I attended during the course of the month. Shopped at the Holiday Bazaar, where I got some good bargains on a wide variety of items. I'd encourage everyone to come next year. Tended the PBA's Holiday Luncheon. Served at the Palm Beach Gardens Holiday Lunch for the seniors. Vice Mayor Lett and I presented, she said, to the Historical Society, and she did a great job yesterday. Attended an excellent, attended an excellent speech by Bob Goldfarb at the Chamber. Attended a Chamber breakfast. We all wrapped gifts for the holiday gift drive. I served breakfast with, with the chief and Natalie, and if you ever want to know a recipe for eggs, the chief will be glad to tell you what they look like. And attended the Community Hanukkah Celebration. Attended a PGA Corridor Association breakfast. And Councilmember Marino and I attended hands-on training with our firefighters. It was a wonderful experience. I, I learned a lot. And I watched Maria take the door of a car right off, from the side of the car. So you really don't want to take her off, because she just ripped the thing right off with the jaws of life.
That was fun.
Yeah, it was fun.
Maria.
Actually, as Rochelle said, it wasn't, you know, being a holiday, it was a nice time with family, even though I have family in from Italy and construction in my house and, you know, sleeping on an air mattress, but probably too much information for all of you all. But the month was still full. Palm Beach County League of Cities had their 50th anniversary. We had a barbecue out in the Glades, which was very well-attended. City of Palm Beach Gardens tree lighting ceremony as usual. Santa, Santa, thank you very much. And I think he, I think Santa's like shaved his beard for the, for the summer. Looks good, by the way. Palm Beach Gardens Holiday Bazaar, I, too, did purchase some fun things and do go there every year, and you'd be amazed at what people can actually make. It's just, I walk around and go, wow, who would have thought? But anyway. I was a judge for the Marine Industries Association's 25th Annual Palm Beach Holiday Boat Parade. I encourage all of you to go next year and watch. It was a, some very lovely boats and some very enthusiastic people. Had a county road programming meeting with the county staff, along with our staff, Natalie and all. Please, thank you. There are not, not enough words when you all are in the room, and the amount of education and knowledge that you have and share is phenomenal, from my heart. Palm Beach Gardens Lakeside Senior Club Holiday Luncheon, that was fun, and we all served breakfast, or I, I'm sorry, we served lunch for our seniors and had a little entertainment, and the seniors seemed to enjoy that event very much. TPA Governing Board meeting, where we had some issues about State Road 7, which will be, which are still on the board, so we will be talking about that in the future, as Rochelle said, the Leadership Palm Beach County Holiday Breakfast. And I toured Avenir. Got in the car and looked around and saw what they were doing out there, and it's very impressive, and they're doing a great job. Also, the Palm Beach North Chamber Business Before Hours with Wendy Link. And as Matthew said, holiday gift wrapping with our other council members. That's always a wonderful toy drive and joy drive for the kids, and you'd be amazed at, I also do that for the Edna W. Runner Tutorial Center up in Jupiter for 107 at-risk kids, and there are so many kids in our, and families in our, in our surrounding areas that are in need, and it's just wonderful that we have had staff in our agencies that have come together to do this, so I, big shout-out to our toy drive folks. Jingle and mingle Holiday Breakfast at our new facility, state-of-the-art. We are very impressed. It's a great way to showcase the investment in our city. Thank you. As Rochelle said, Jackson Hewitt Tax Service ribbon cutting, Forum Club Luncheon. I also met with Sharon Bach this week, our county clerk. As Matthew said, day on the hill with the Palm Beach County Fire Rescue folks. And I think several of us went to the North Palm Beach Country Club ribbon cutting. And I'm surprised you all forgot the Hanukkah lighting at the Habad, but that was a very wonderful event, very well-attended. PGA Corridor Association Annual Economic Forecast Breakfast, and Mr. Fishkind is always nice to the city of Palm Beach Gardens. And I do want to say that there are a couple of events in the future that were not on Mark's List, but I, again, will be in the Heroes vs. Hot Shots Kickball Tournament, Saturday, January 18th, which we raise money for student aces. And also, if you haven't put the South Florida Fair on your calendar this month, please do so. And that is my report.
Carl.
Well, other than just repeating what, some of the things that you guys said, I'm not going to get into it, because it's just the same thing, the same meetings, the same, you know, so, other than trying to attend more association meetings within the community, which is going to be my direction for this year, get into the associations and let them know that the council's there for them, hopefully bring back good information to the city. That's going to be my target this year. But I would just be repetitive. It was, it was a great year. Palm Beach Gardens had a great year. I think this year's going to be an awesome year for the city and its community. Can't wait for the Honda Classic. I mean, that is just a blast every year, and it's nice to see all the, the community that comes together, the, the visitors come here, and the city just shines, and you can tell. I never hear one complaint from any resident about traffic or anything when it comes to the Honda Classic, so super excited about that. Other than that, I'd rather keep it short and just get on to the business at hand.
All right, let me just quickly go through a few things. Palm Beach Gardens Tree Lighting, Healthcare District Finance Meeting, Lakeside Lunch, Senior Lunch, exactly quite good, the food was good. A very lively discussion on mobility at our joint Palm Beach North Chamber Government Affairs and Economic Development Committee meeting, and I'm very proud of our city and our staff and how we're continuing to sell the idea of a strong mobility plan and fee in our city and how it's going to benefit the community as a whole. Probably one of the biggest highlights was I did a ride-along with the fire rescue guys, and that was really kind of fun. Thank you, chief, for helping arrange that. I didn't realize how hard it would be. I'm almost 50, so maybe that's why it was hard. But these guys and gals, they train for every possible scenario, and we may not think about the fact that there's not a lot of fires in the city or not a lot of XYZ, but, boy, they, they need to know everything all the time. And their commitment, their professionalism was really neat to see, and I know they weren't doing it just because I was there. They were, they were just talking on their, on their own, so it was a really fun day. It was tiring, and it was eye-opening, so thanks for letting me do that. I did do a tour of Avenir, so that'll be an exparté coming up. Palm Beach North Chamber Breakfast, the wrapping of gifts. Intergovernmental Agency League of Cities meeting, there was a number of mayors and representatives from around the county, and there's a lot of discussion about mobility and workforce housing, and a lot of people are looking at our city as what, what we're doing, and I assured them that we're committed to making this a good example of how the rest of the county and our fellow municipalities can engage mobility going forward. Breakfast at the Ops Center, the Hanukkah lighting at the Habad. Went to an event to support my friend Maria for her next venture. There were two fun events. Oh, I did go to the North Palm Clubhouse. White School and the Meyer Prep Academy Schools, they both had me attend yesterday and today for lunch. And my goodness, the kids in middle school are smarter. I mean, are we smarter than a fifth grader? Hell, no, not from those places. They are amazing. Their questions were really pointed, and I think that's the key, you know? We have to listen to our constituents. Carl goes out to multiple HOA meetings and just talks to people, as we all talk to people, and listening to them and their concerns for their future is really what we have to listen to and think about. And I know some of the things we, here at the city council, can't control, some of their questions were very broad and, you know, one person had said, are we going into World War III? And that's a scary thought, but that's what they worry about, and that's what they think about, so we all have to remember what the kids are thinking, because this is their world that we're preparing for them, so let's make sure we do it right. With that, I am done, and we will move on to comments from the public. I have two cards. The first is Ed Dolizol. If you can please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Ed Dolizol. I'm at 4905 Midtown Lane in Unit 2410 of Palm Beach Gardens. Good evening and Happy New Year to all of you. I'm returning, I had, I was here last time in November to address the issue of 5G technology and its impact on the community. All the information that's arisen since then is getting worse and worse. The impact is such that many cities, states, and even countries have decided to not move forward with it at all. So my question for you is, and the concern comes from regard to health and, and the well-being of the citizens, and the question I have for you at this point is, would the city council be interested in setting up an advisory board on this whole issue of 5G? I know that there's been a capitulation because of the FCC driving this whole 5G rollout and Tallahassee as well, but it's a big issue and it's not going to go away. Nothing will improve with regard to the technology, and I think there needs to be more input from the residents in the area and how we want to manage the issue. So that's basically my question for you. Advisory Board, yes or no? Thank you.
Thank you. You know, as, as you know, many of us, many of the things that we get presented at the local level, at the city level, is not something that we can actively change when it comes to all sorts of things, because the state preempts the local municipalities. That's not a cop-out, that's just the reality of it. We continue to talk about things that we can try to do, but really, this argument has to go to Tallahassee, and, you know, if there's any need, any, any way that we can help you communicate that with the people that really are the ones that are making that decision, then I'd be happy to talk to you later on.
That'd be awesome. Thank you very much for your support. Thank you for your attention.
One other card. Alan Goldberg and Cheryl Wisaki, I believe you're going to come together. Name, address for the record, please.
Best hot dogs in Palm Beach Gardens.
Your Honor.
Name and address for the record, please, thank you.
My name is Alan Goldberg. This is my daughter Cheryl Wisaki, and our address is 3960 North Lake Boulevard. We have a small hot dog stand there that we live in seven days a week. Now, I know you're not allowed to live in your store, but I live more in my hot dog store than I live in my home in Ballin Isles. So I know my time is going, and my daughter is watching me, because when I have spoken before groups before, I've had unlimited time. I'll be very brief. I thank you all, all the council members, the mayor, the vice mayor, all of you to listen. My problem is very simple. We have what you'd call a mom-and-pop business. It's located in the Home Depot Shopping Center. We are in the back of the center, and when we first started, we were told Palm Beach Gardens was extremely difficult to get permits, to hold signs, or to advertise within the shopping center. Well, you can get a permit. You can stand outside six days a year, and only six days a year. You have to apply for a permit, and you have to give the dates a year in advance. Now, thank God, this isn't Chicago, where you'd have five snow days. We wouldn't do that. We have a problem, because I've stood out there, and some of the city officials have stopped me and said, this is not your date, and that's fine. I think it would behoove Palm Beach Gardens to either extend longer permits and charge more money, which is good for the city. We're trying to save small businesses in this country. We're not McDonald's, we're not Wendy's, we're a very, very small mom-and-pop hot dog stand. Our hands are tied, we are in the back of the shopping center. Home Depot in every other major city in the country has hot dog stands in front of them. Not allowed in Palm Beach Gardens. They were thrilled when I told them I was moving there. They said, walk around with a sign, tell people you're there, we'll hand out your menus. Can't do it. It's against the ordinance in Palm Beach Gardens. The sign's in the window to say open. We can't even be seen from the street. When I have stood with a sign, I have stood on the sidewalk, many of the police officers here have come to our place, they know I don't disrupt traffic. I'm just trying to find out what I have to do as a citizen. I'm honored to be before you, but, you know, I'm humbled also. People were talking about the Honda Classic. I know I have 13 seconds, I watch it also. People were talking about the Honda Classic, people were talking about the Bear Club, I'm familiar with that. This is the smallest part of the business in Palm Beach Gardens, and we'd rather Palm Beach Gardens didn't lose small centers. Thank you, and if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
I appreciate your time. Thank you, and we'll discuss that later on.
Thank you so much for listening. Appreciate it.
All right, since I already did the city manager report, do you have anything else you want to bring up, Ron?
I appreciate your assistance.
Let's move on to the consent agenda. I do want to pull two items, and if anyone else has any other comments, I want to pull item C and item K, Resolution 10. Does anybody else have anything they want to discuss outside of the consent? Can we get a motion in a second to approve consent agenda minus item C and K?
Second.
All approved? Aye. All right, can we get a presentation on the purchase award on item C?
Good evening, City Council. For the record, Krumrah, Purchasing and Contracts Director, and with me is Todd Engel, our City Engineer. This is an agreement for traffic signals for Northlake, Ancient Tree, and Bay Hill intersection. As you probably know, the city has jurisdiction for the roadway that intersects Northlake, Ancient Tree, and Bay Hill Residential Developments, and gives access to the city's golf clubhouse. We had a request in, or we have a request into the county for traffic signals to take care of current needs and future requirements. The county and the city are currently working together to complete warrant analysis to determine when the signals may be installed. In the interest of safety and for the residents and the traveling public, the city will move forward the purchase of the traffic signals and install them when warranted. The city is piggybacking the county's contract and the county's vendor, so that the signals are installed to the county's specification, so they can be integrated with the county's traffic signal management system in the future. This is the location, and our city engineer is going to come up and give you some more technical aspects of the project.
Okay, where we are right now with the project is, we have a full design for the project, and we had submitted permitting to Palm Beach County. Palm Beach County has broken the permit up into two sections. One is the underground, which is the mast arm foundations and all the electrical and underground components, and the other one will be the actual installation of the mast arms themselves and the signal. We've satisfied everything for the underground warrant or permit, with the exception of a easement that Bay Hill Estates will have to give to the county for maintenance of the traffic mast arms and the above-ground components. So we are in the process of doing that right now. Bay Hill Estates lawyers have that ongoing. That should be submitted to the county, hopefully by the end of the month, and then that underground permit will be issued. We're also in the process of doing a warrant analysis at the intersection, and that will take place probably next week or the week after that, and continue into February so we can capture all the high seasons. We're going to do a high-level warrant analysis and evaluate the data, and if we meet that warrant, per our standards, we are going to issue a notice to proceed to this contract, and the contract, in the contract, we'll begin to install the underground portions first, we'll submit the warrant to the county, and then we'll start to install the above-ground. And it's important that we award this now, because it's a very long lead time to get the mast arms. It's somewhere between 28, 36 weeks. So the faster we can get the process going, once we get the warrant, the faster we can get the signal up and operational. So that's the update of where we are with the traffic signal.
Thank you. I asked this of you to present this, not because I'm concerned about the cost or, you know, what you're doing, but really to just shed... cost or, you know, what you're doing, but really to shed light on it because you guys have been working very hard to get this light. We've heard from hundreds of residents out that way about the danger of trying to get in and out of Bay Hill, now Sand Hill, Crane, all of the communities in the city and outside of the city. And, you know, to sit back and wait for a study in six months from now that may not show the data that we know is there or will be coming when you look across the street and see the changes that's coming, in my mind, is just not commonsensical. So I'm thankful that you guys are pushing forward and I want to make sure our residents know that their concerns for the traffic and the dangers that are out there, we don't want to wait for people to die before they say, "Oh, we should, now it's okay to build a light." So the reason for pulling this for my colleagues and the people in the room was just to make sure that everyone understands where we're at and that we're pushing forward. Does anybody have any comments?
I have a comment. I went toward it just to make sure that I had a full understanding of what's going on out there. And the Bay Hill Ancient Tree intersection is extremely dangerous and I think that we owe it to our residents to protect them from this dangerous situation. So I commend you for your work on this and I hope we can get these installed quickly to save lives.
Any other comments? All right. Well, let's go ahead and hear further discussion. Can I get a vote all in favor?
I make a motion that we adopt C.
Thank you. Second?
I'll second.
All in favor? Aye. Five zero. Thank you. And can I get the clerk read the title on Resolution 10, 2020?
Resolution 10, 2020, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Palm Beach Gardens, Florida, strongly encouraging the state legislator to approve Senate Bill 182 and any companion House bills relating to the preemption of recyclable and polystyrene materials by amending Section 403.7033 and Section 500.90 Florida statutes, repealing the preemption of local laws regarding the use and sale of single-use plastic bags and polystyrene materials, further encouraging reveler of such preemption as affirmation and support of municipal home rule providing an effective date for the purposes.
Sorry. Can I get a motion in a second to approve?
Make a motion.
I'll second.
All right. Open for discussion. Just so the reason I wanted to open this up, this was something that followed our discussion last month at the end of the last meeting in regards to Senate Bill 182. Is it 182? That we've all been discussing in regards to the preemption. So does anybody have any questions?
No.
No questions. I have a com-
So I just wanted to, go ahead.
I just had to comment on it, that I'm happy that we took it up and just to remind everybody that the primary purpose, as it states in our background, is to express the council's support for municipal home rule, that we're all going up to Tallahassee next week. We will be continually fighting the legislature's attempt to take away our ability. So whether, you know, we decide to do anything or not is irrelevant. We should have the right to do it either way. And so I, the other comment I wanted to make was, I think we've done a really good job as a council not trying to burden our businesses with unnecessary regulations. And I think we can move that way. I think it's also telling that since 90% of the cities in the county already have bans on some of these items. Take straws, for example. All around us, you go into a Starbucks, you get paper or you get the flat lid. In Palm Beach Gardens, you get a plastic straw. Everywhere around us, there's no reason that we as residents, and I want to ask you a challenge to everybody, that when you're out, if you're given a plastic straw or something that you know has an environmental substitute, ask to speak to the manager and bring it up and just say, "Don't offer one," or "If somebody wants one, have another alternative." We shouldn't be the only city in the middle and I think we can do it with education without having to pass legislation if everybody works together. And that might be a great thing for the university to get involved with and help us with. So.
And our sustainability committee.
Committee, right. We're working on it.
All right. Any other discussion, questions, comments? Can I get a motion to, we already got the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. All right.
Pretty soon, we're going to be on everybody's left down here.
All right. So Ordinance 1, 2020. Can the clerk read the title, please?
Oh, Mayor, would you please read the quasi-statement?
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you. Tonight, we are holding quasi judicial hearings on the following case, Resolution 4, 2020, Avenue Plan Community Development Amendment. This means that the city council is required by law to base its decision on the evidence contained in the record of this proceeding, which consists of the testimony at the hearing, the materials which are in the official city file on this application, and any documents presented during this hearing. The council is also required by law to allow cross-examination of any witnesses who testify tonight. Cross-examination may occur after the staff, the applicant, and other participants have made their presentations and will be permitted in the order of the witnesses' appearance. It is necessary that anyone who testifies at the hearing remain until the conclusion of the hearing in order to be able to respond to any questions. If you plan to testify this evening or wish to offer written comments, please fill out a card and give it to the city clerk. The city clerk will now swear in all persons who intend to offer testimony this evening on any of these issues, the cases.
Do you solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? So help you God.
All right. Thank you. Can now the clerk read Ordinance 1, 2020?
Ordinance 1, 2020, and ordinance to the City Council of the City of Palm Beach Gardens, Florida, amending the City of Palm Beach Gardens budget for the fiscal year beginning October 1, 2019, and ending September 30, 2020, inclusive providing a conflicts clause, a severability clause, and authority to codify providing an effective date and further purposes.
Open the hearing. Staff presentation, Alan. Thank you.
Yes. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Alan Owens, Finance Administrator, for the record. Ordinance 1, 2020, budget amendment is the typical amendment that we do at the beginning of each fiscal year as we close out the prior year and move into the next fiscal year. And basically, we accomplish about three things by doing this. First of all, we reappropriate balances on open purchase orders and CIP projects that were in process at the end of last year. Unspent monies are rolling forward from last year to next year. Also, as we closed out the books for the prior year, every year, under good government accounting practices, we adjust our beginning budgeted fund balance in concert with the actual ending fund balances. And we'll talk more about those adjustments in a little bit here. And we also have a couple of other recommended, requested spending plan adjustments and we'll talk about those in a second also. First of all, as far as the carryforward of projects from last year and the total amount of purchase orders, we had a total of about 42 open capital improvement projects that were being carried forward and also purchase orders to the tune of about $26.3 million in total monies that are being rolled forward from last year to the current fiscal year. Some of the more significant projects that are being carried forward, you could see one of the main, the most, actually the largest one, you saw the picture, was the City Hall expansion, which is one of our one cent surtax projects. We had a balance of about $6.5 million. The next largest was the $4 million that we're rolling forward for the Tennis Center clubhouse expansion. And I won't go through the whole detail of all the projects. You can see them listed before you. And this rounds out the total of the significant projects that are being rolled forward from last year to the current year. Moving on to the analysis of the general fund reserves after we closed the books for last year, we have some good news. If you recall, in the current budget, we had budgeted a budget stabilization reserve of about $2.3 million. When everything was said and done and we closed the books, we realized an increase in reserves of about $2.8 million. We are requesting, recommending a couple of adjustments. First of all, we're recommending to transfer about $2.4 million of that to the unassigned reserve fund. That will raise that balance from what was the original $23.1 million to an even $25.5 million, which will increase that as a percent of our expenditures to just under 28%. The couple of reasons why we're recommending this, it's been something that's been discussed by council and the staff quite a while now. It was really brought, I think, to the forefront last year during the hurricane season as Hurricane Dorian approached the Bahamas, category five storm. And we've been noticing the trend of more and more category, very strong category four and five storms over the last few years. And David Reyes, through a model, I believe it was U.S. Army Corps of Engineer model, calculated that a five, category five storm would generate almost $24 million in debris costs alone. That's not even accounting for other costs, damages to buildings, parks, other facilities, equipment, vehicles, those types of things. Also, the emergency protective measure costs primarily overtime and labor cost. So we really felt that it's very important to try to beef up our unassigned reserves due to that. That's one thing. Also, if you recall, last year during the budget hearings, we also discussed the Moody's Report that came out right around the time of the second public hearing. And again, they reaffirmed our AAA rating and again, very positive financial indicators. But the one thing they did notice was that I think it was 2014 through 2018, the city's fund balance, while staying or unassigned staying constant, the trend as a percent of the budget was actually going down, which was counter to the U.S. city's average over the same time period. The U.S. city's median, actually, the percentage as a total percentage of the fund, of the expenses had actually increased. So we're trying to address that issue also. And the last item that I would mention, if you recall, within 10-year forecast in fiscal year 2024, I believe it was, it actually showed our unassigned balance dipping slightly below our, my policy, the 17% is what our minimum threshold is. So for those reasons, we're recommending to transfer that $2.4 million and raise the unassigned reserves to $25.5 million. The other item that we're recommending, we'll talk a little bit more about it on the next page, but we are requesting to accelerate some repair, maintenance projects, and also a couple of CIP projects just to, due to more recent needs analysis that has been done by staff. Again, remember, these numbers are put together probably nine months ago and we're constantly reviewing the status of things, various projects and needed repairs. So we're recommending to transfer $1.1 million from the reserves. So that would leave our ending balance in the budget stabilization in this year's budget at about $1.66 million. And this page just shows what some of those recommended projects are that we're recommending to accelerate. Again, I won't read every single list here, but primarily a lot of electrical, air conditioning type of repairs and maintenance. One major project you'll note there is the $250,000 for the tennis court expansion, additional two courts, again, based upon current need. So those are the recommendations staff is bringing forth tonight for council's consideration. And with that, staff recommends approval of Ordinance 1, 2020 as presented on first reading. Be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. I don't have any cards on this, so I'll close the public hearing. Can I get a motion in a second to approve?
Or make a motion.
I'll second.
Okay. Bring back for discussion. Carl, do you have anything you want to ask or bring up?
It was nice to pull, it was nice to pull this just so we could get it out in the open, that we do have a little bit more money left over this year. The city's going to continue to grow this year. The thing that keeps coming back and making me a little bit nervous was that hurricane that made a right turn right off our coast. So you kind of wonder if putting this and making our reserve money grow so, you know, we can sustain ourselves for a little bit longer. You know, and then another thing crosses my mind that, you know, that Rochelle said is, when you hear about, when you talk to the residences, their most concern is about traffic. It, you know, and, you know, and I kind of vetted this a little bit about going back to possibly reducing taxes a little bit. And I walked my neighborhood and everybody was like, "Let the city keep the money. Let the city keep the money." So for now, I think we should just breathe a minute. We've got it in the spot that whatever happens, happens. But, you know, we stuck to a 10-year plan. It shows we could take a dip. I'm comfortable just going forward as we've, as we've gone for the last several years and just preparing for this year to see what happens.
Maria?
Well, Alan, you and I have talked often about actually the percentage of the dollars and how it has, as a percent, has gone down, even though the money has stayed the same. And after our response to Hurricane Michael up in the Panhandle and seeing an entire community wiped out and the services that they got provided to them were because of us, if our reserves dip, I mean, basically, you're looking at having maybe three months' worth of reserves. And that puts us in the position where maybe we can go out and borrow money, but we do need to be mindful of what is in our reserves. And I know, I know it's sexy to lower the millage rate, but I don't know if it is actually economic or thoughtful because we do need to be able to have those funds set aside. And who knows? I mean, if, if that, after what Fishkind said yesterday, we have no idea what the housing market is going to bring in the future. And if the housing market slows down, that's another hit to our income because tax dollars go down. Whether the military goes up or down, tax dollars coming in are going to go down because house values are going to go down. So we really need to be mindful of this. I am happy just the way it is. And this is something we do every January. We have to, this is our homework. We do this. We go through the budget and just a good job as usual. You all go through this very well and you are very mindful of how we spend money and bringing, bringing these projects to fruition now as opposed to later on is mindful also because we get some economies of scale with our dollars that way. So I'm all in favor of this. Thank you.
Matthew?
Briefly, we're the trustees of this community and we need to make sure that we have sufficient reserves.
I'm sorry. Could you speak into your microphone?
Sure. We're the trustees of this city and we need to make sure there's sufficient reserves to sustain us through any natural disaster. And I think that this budget does that. So I'm going to be in favor of it.
Rochelle?
Just want to say thank you for the work on this and that I too think that increasing the percentage is a good move and I'm happy the city that we're going in that direction.
Okay. Well, we're not voting on millages here. We're just voting on cleaning up the, so we're just going to go ahead and, and be grateful that we have a good budgeting team. We've got a great accounting team that really has nice, clean books and easy to read. The transfer of dollars is kind of arbitrary and it's just part of what we do every year. So this conversation really is not about whether we want to lower taxes or raise taxes. It's just about whether or not we agree with the transfer of funds and, and of course, I'll be supportive of that. So.
So I'll agree that we just had the conversation for August so we can scratch that off the agenda when it comes time to vote on the budget. There you go.
We'll talk about that in August. Let's, and pray that we don't have a hurricane. In the meantime, may I get a, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Passes five zero. Thank you. Ordinance 2, 2020, first reading. Can the clerk read the title, please?
Ordinance 2, 2020, in ordinance of the City Council of the City of Palm Beach Gardens, Florida, amending its comprehensive plan, use plan, in accordance with the mandate set forth in Chapter 163 Florida statutes, specifically Section 163.3177 and Section 163.3184 adsequentes pursuant to application number CPTA-19-08-000034, which provides for amendments to the future land use element, transportation element, infrastructure element, intergovernmental coordination element, capital improvements element, and public school facilities element, to reflect amendments to the Palm Beach County School Board into local agreement, add a new Vision Zero policy, update the five-year schedule of capital improvements, update MAP-A4 potential future annexation to update the current municipal boundary, and update the city's 10-year water supply facilities work plan, providing for transmission to the Florida Department of Economic Opportunity, DEO, providing a conflicts clause, a severability clause, and authority to codify, providing an effective date and for other purposes. Note to the public, there is a sign-up sheet at the front desk for anyone wanting additional information from the Department of Economic Opportunity.
Thank you. We'll open the hearing. Staff presentation. Hi.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and City Council Members. Don Sonnaborn with the Planning and Zoning Department. This is a city-initiated amendment for the comprehensive plan. It's mostly housekeeping in nature. The items that you see here is what we've grouped together for the petition. The first one having to do with school concurrency, that is changes that have to do with legislation and the new interlocal agreement that the city- and the new interlocal agreement that the City Council entered into with the school district. The second is the annual update of the capital improvement element, the, the, sorry, the capital improvement schedule that includes our budget and the school district's budget. The bulk of the work was in the 10-year water supply plan, and we coordinated very closely with the SUA and the South Florida Water Management District on that. We have a new Vision Zero policy. We're putting in our transportation element that we're very excited about, and that goes hand in hand with our mobility plan and our complete streets. And then we're updating the potential future annexation map, which is part of our map series in the comprehensive plan, just to include the annex, annexation areas that we recently annexed into the city. Under the coordinated school planning, as I mentioned, the interlocal agreement was entered into in 2016 between the city, the county, and the municipalities with the school district. The level of service for school concurrency is no longer required, so all the level of service policies are coming out of the comprehensive plan, and the school coordination policies will remain, and those are going into the other elements of the comprehensive plan where appropriate. The school district is still very involved in our petitions as they come in. Applicants have to fill out the SCAD, the School Capacity Availability Determination Form, that's part of our development review process, so the school district is still involved. This is the update of the Table 9A and Table 9B in the capital improvement element for the annual update of the capital improvements based on our budgets. And like I said, the bulk of the work was with the water supplies plan. The last time we updated this was in 2015, and we are required by Florida statute, when the South Florida Water Management District updates their regional water supply plan, all the municipalities within 18 months have to update their plans. So, that's the process that this is in, and we therefore have to update our plan by May 8th, 2020. And just to highlight a couple of things that that water supply plan update does look at is updated population projections, the existing conditions, the current and projected water supply demands. We look at reclaimed water and updated relevant regional issues. Of course, we are served, our water is served through the Seacoast Utility Authority, and the good news is we have adequate water to supply over the long-term planning horizon. And SUA has a lot of technology that maximizes our water supply and gives us our great water quality that you see here. We have many policies within our comp plan that deal with water conservation and reclaimed water policies. You can see a few of them that are here. We also have, as projects are approved, we have development orders, conditions of approval, where we encourage low-volume water use plumbing fixtures and a lot of other water conservation measures that you see here, as well as our landscape codes. It promotes and encourages the water conservation as well. As I mentioned, the transportation element will have this new policy that will set us up to provide a new Vision Zero program in the future that goes hand in hand with our mobility plan and our mobility fee, which was recently adopted, the existing complete streets policies we have in the comprehensive plan, and just gives us that opportunity to enhance the multimodal policies that we have in our comprehensive plan. And the Vision Zero is a national program that many cities are following, that is adopting a safe program and approach for vehicles, bicycles, and pedestrians. A Vision Zero is to state, it's zero deaths from fatalities to bicyclists and pedestrians would be the goal. And again, just updating that potential future annexation map to include the cities now that have been annexed into the city. It's been public notice, and the next step, we have, actually, we did the iPark notification back in November. No comments have been provided by any of the folks that we sent that to. And I had mentioned close coordination with SUA, with South Florida Water Management, County, in the preparation of the water supply plan. And our next step after this first reading is to transmit to DEO, which is the State Planning Office, and the reviewing agencies that go along with that. Planning and zoning recommended approval unanimously at the December 10th meeting, and staff recommends approval of ordinance 2, 2020, as presented at this first reading.
Thank you. Did everybody read the 158 pages?
I did.
Put you, put you to sleep?
I'm on page 148.
Thank you for that.
Does anybody have any, Carl, do you have any questions about any of this?
Negative.
Matthew, do you have any questions about any of this?
I'd.
Rochelle, do you have any questions?
I'm ready to generate.
Maria?
Two comments. I do want to point out that in page 53, we talked about the intergovernmental coordination, which is important to know that the city is not, you know, we're not in a fishbowl. We are working with the state and local and county governments to achieve what we need to achieve. So, that's important to note. And also, on page 131, it was the reflection of the new facility on the Congress Road Extension. So, another opportunity where the city gave up dollars in, in hopes of our water supply going on for a longer period of time. So, just wanted to say, yoo-hoo, I'm in favor.
Well, I only thought that there was one interesting comment there, that there was in the schools section, there was about adding a, possibly adding a school in the two main sections in the city, and yet they just sold the land back to Avenir, which I thought was a little bit strange, because they could have put one there if they wanted to. But anyway, that was it. No, everything else is, is, is fine. Thank you for doing all the hard work. It's laborious, I'm sure, but it's necessary to keep our charter clear, so.
Thank you.
Any other comments? No? All right, we'll close the hearing. Can I get a motion in second to approve?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I think 5-0, thank you. All right. Resolution 4, 2020, can the clerk read the title?
Resolution 4, 2020, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Palm Beach Gardens, Florida, approving a planned community development, PCD amendment to the Avenir PCD master plan to relocate 100,000 square feet of medical office square footage from parcel C, workplace economic development, to parcel D, workplace relocate 155,000 square feet of commercial retail square footage from parcel B, town center, to parcel D, workplace. Modify and approved parcel D, workplace driveway location, amend the Avenir development standards to modify the list of permitted uses to include emergency healthcare department and recreation private outdoor. The Avenir PCD is generally located on the north side of Northlake Boulevard, east of Grapeview Boulevard, west of Bay Hill Drive, and south of Beeline Highway, providing an effective date for the purposes.
Thank you. Are there any expertes?
I do not. I do, I met with the folks at Avenir, and we discussed this.
I would think our ride around the community was an ex parte, so I'll say yes.
I did as well with the ride around the community.
Nope, dodged them all December.
So, we have a, we have a presentation. Have you been sworn in?
Yes. Good, good evening. Ken Tum with Urban Design Kill Day Studios. My address is 610 Clematis Street, West Palm Beach, Florida. I have been sworn in on resolution four, I believe is the correct number. Here tonight on behalf of Avenir, this is a PCD amendment. So, a little quick history, this is revision basically to the overall plan of Avenir. This plan now has been alive since approximately 2013 was the first sketch that was done on this plan, and the request that is in front of you today is to amend the PCD to allow for changes as the project becomes more clearer and clearer. The last time this happened was in 2018. We did some minor modifications to the plan. Here we are in January of 2020, eight years ago, these folks closed on that parcel of land, and over the next 20 years, you will see more modifications as the plan gets a little bit more focused. My presentation tonight is about four or five slides, take about 10 minutes tops. Okay, so, the items that are in front of you this evening, as the clerk read into the record, are on the screen in front of you, but in essence, we're shifting some medical office, retail, relocating driveways, and modifying the design standards to allow for additional gathering spaces, to allow for private recreation, also to allow for expanded emergency department within the medical area. I'm going to walk you through those changes very quickly. The first change is parcel D, oops, parcel D, here, we are revising to shift 100,000 square feet of medical office from parcel C to parcel D. The idea is to allow for a medical cluster of up to 200,000 square feet all in parcel D. Parcel D is currently approved for 100,000 square feet. We are not requesting any additional square footage, we are just shifting as identified by the arrow, arrow of square footage. The other one is on the town center, parcel B, we're requesting to relocate 155,000 square feet of retail space from parcel B to parcel D. The town center design is nearing completion. It has about 250,000 square feet on it. This allows for the additional 155,000, 155,000 square feet of the total 400,000 square feet to be moved over to the parcel D. The purpose of that is to provide goods and services for the, for the, both the workplace area and the medical complex that will exist in that area. The next item is a little more technical, relocation of a driveway. There's a driveway identified in the circle, the arrow just moved over, that driveway is shifting to the west a certain distance to line up with a driveway that is proposed and approved across the street by Palm Beach County that will allow this to be a full intersection at that, at that entrance point. There are some minor amendments to the, to the PCD guidelines. First thing, your staff made an excellent suggestion, since we're shifting some of that retail to the west, we should probably have an extra acre or so of additional open space and gathering area in that medical area and within that office area, because it's going to be, going to have a significant amount, hopefully, of medical office and a campus feel, and having that additional one acre land on top of the already required one acre to allow for additional amenities. Also, we are requesting to allow for a freestanding ED within the design guidelines. And here is the exact proposed language, I'm not going to read it, but in essence, it says, "We're requesting to add an additional acre of land into parcel D for the additional area on the west side, have that to be in pedestrian and shaded areas and sidewalks." And the other one is to allow for emergency healthcare definition, to allow for an emergency healthcare department or ED in the general area. Finally, we are requesting the opportunity to place a Crystal Lagoon within the Town Center District. If you recall, it was here probably two years ago, we had, we placed it in parcel A, then a good design concept came up to allow it to be added to the town center, so we're requesting to add that to the town center. That's in essence what the private outdoor recreation space is allowed. Again, it is currently allowed in parcel A. So, this is a summary of the request that is in front of you. We have staff recommendation of approval, we had unanimous approval by the Planning and Zoning Board, and I'm here to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Go back once.
Yes, sir.
You can go on, I just want to go with this again.
I'm, I'm here for questions right now, Councilmember Woods. For now.
Okay, look, I'll go this way this time. Rochelle?
No questions. I think it's responsible, makes sense what those switches are, if we're adding more office space and more building in D, to have the amenities there to allow for people not to have to drive or, or move, to have to go for lunch or, or services, so that seems reasonable. We'll be excited to see two Crystal Lagoons in Avenir, the potential for two, so I think that will be unique. And, you know, I think it was confusing at first, but definitely makes sense.
Matthew?
Sure, I had the opportunity to tour the property today, and I was extremely impressed with the quality of, of this development. I think it's going to add tremendous value to this community, and we're very fortunate to have the developers of Avenir doing such a great job for our city.
Maria?
I never miss an opportunity to talk about this project. One, the need for commercial and services for our residents is so important, so to accommodate them is very important, because we want to capture traffic, and we want to give them services so that they are buying homes out there, so that the project is a success. Just a reminder that if nothing had happened on this property, there would have been 480 homes out there on Septic, as opposed to 2,400 acres in conservancy, connecting 100,000 acres of what lands at no cost to the taxpayers. Also, the density right now, I mean, when you look at the density for these properties, so not only is, not only is it 4,800 acres in conservancy, your maximum lot coverage for the Town Center District is, you know, 70%, so you still have 30% green space. And then in your residences, your maximum lot coverage is 55%, so you still have 45% green space in the rest of the community. So, all in all, at the end of the day, this is a lot of, of property that isn't developed. And I just applaud the developers for doing this smartly, and the city for recognizing that we have taken something that really could have been a detriment to the community, where there would have been a drain on our services with no return, and given us a community that is going to add, you know, 6,000 permanent jobs over, I think it's 16,000, Ken, you, I know you sent me that slide, I think it was roughly 16,000 jobs in the next 20 years for the construction. I mean, this is economic impact for our city and our county, so just wanted to say, thank you.
Carl, any other questions, or?
No, I just, you know, we had discussed this over the last couple of years, Ken, with council, and that you guys are going to continuously try and fine-tune these projects, which is moving space around that we knew would come back in front of us. So, any little bit that you can get to capture the people that want to stay in Avenir is going to be better for Northlake and so on. So, you know, I just make sure I take baby steps when it comes to educating myself with Avenir's movements. So, you know, I thought this was a, a good idea, so I revisited it a couple of times. So, you know, and I appreciate your shorter presentations, because we all get it, we're working so hard on it, you know. Oh, and Rosa, I wasn't dodging you, I wasn't here much of December, so I do want to tour out there in the next, say, couple of weeks, if you're okay with that? Bring the hot dog truck or whatever, the lunch truck, again, let me know when that's happening. So, I appreciate that, and, you know, of course, I'm going to support this particular item. Thank you.
Well, I, I, I agree with what everybody is saying. The tweaks and the movements of the properties and how, how it's going to fit best, we knew that was going to be coming back, so that's all fine. My one question, and it's more of a global question, relates to the entrances and exits from Avenir as a whole. We're asking to move the most western ingress, egress, a little bit west, which makes sense. So, I'm just trying to put this in my head, where are the lights going to be and how's it going to impact the region? So, we have that furthest west entrance, you're going to have Coconut, right? That'll go, and there's already a light there. Now, we're moving forward with our Bay Hill, Alton, I mean, not Alton, Samuel Crane, Ancient Tree. Do we know where the other potential lights are going to be and?
As part of the original development order, we're required to monitor certain intersections, and it's in essence, this one, which is now called Avenir Drive, there potentially could be a signal there, there potentially could be a signal at Coconut. I believe that there, there was a condition to monitor this intersection, which is now the one a little further to the west. So, I believe there were a total of three in the resolution that were to be monitored for the need of a signal.
And for sure, two of them are going to be fully approved.
Oh, for sure, there, no doubt, they'll be warranted ultimately.
And then there'll be, of course, the fourth one, which is not directly in Avenir, but just east of Bay Hill. Okay, thank you.
No, you know what? This light thing is coming up, because we want to put the light up at Bay Hill to better that community. So, I went out there and I drove where these potential lights would be, and there, I thought in my mind, an agenda, they would be more on top of each other, but they're not. They're, they're really, they're spread out more than you would think, because if you go right out here from Holly to Plant, or it's Plant, that's like on top of one another, and the county put that light up. So, these are, these are spread out a little more than you would think, and that's why I went out there, it was yesterday as a matter of fact, and, and drove them, and they're, they're situated, they're situated in, in good areas to, to control traffic, and it's speed, so it'll be good.
Councilmember Wood, if I may add, it is hard. I forget all the time. When I go to Avenir and I like, oh, I hit, I start and I hit Avenir and I'm at the corner right by Ancient Tree, and then we have a meeting way on the other side, it's two and a half miles to the west. So, you forget, I mean, you forget the scale. I mean, we're looking at this thing, the road going north-south here is four and a half miles. So, you're right, there's a significant separation.
And three traffic signals in that area is not unreasonable when it's 55 miles an hour, and, and they're coming in. miles an hour, and, and they're coming in from, uh, Seminole Pratt at two lanes, and, you know, they're going sixty, sixty-five coming into Coconut. So, um, it, you know, to, to control that a little bit as it goes, moves east is, is a good thing.
Yes, sir.
So was there a staff comment or presentation in any way?
No. Staff recommends approval. All of the information that we had prepared was, was the same, so staff does recommend approval.
Thank you. All right, we'll close the hearing. Can I get a motion and second?
I'd like a motion that we adopt resolution four, two thousand twenty.
I'll second.
I'll give Carl the credit on this one, okay? All right, so we don't have to come back for a discussion, so all in favor?
Aye.
Five-zero, thank you. Thank you. All right, and lastly, can the clerk read the title? Resolution eight, 2020.
Uh, resolution eight, 2020. A resolution of the City Council of the City of Palm Beach Gardens, Florida, amending resolution sixty-eight, two thousand three to strike conditions of approval, number eight, to allow future ground floor tenant sign for parcel twenty-seven oh four within the Regional Center Plan Community Development, PCD, which is located on the northeast corner of PGA Boulevard and Q Gardens Avenue, as more particularly described herein, providing a condition of approval, providing an effective date and further purposes.
Thank you. We'll open the hearing. Can I get a presentation?
Good evening. My name is George Pissler. I work with Cutler and Hearing. We're here tonight, uh, representing the, representing the applicant, uh, twenty-nine seventy-nine PGA Condo Association. Uh, I'd like to start with just saying I'm thankful to be here tonight. This is my first time in front of you. Uh, hopefully it's not the last, but, uh, but that will go ahead.
Just speak louder. If you speak louder, you're going to do better.
Lots of questions for you, lots.
I got twenty-seven for you right now.
Speak a little louder or closer to the microphone?
All right, all right, all right. Let him, let him do his job first, please.
You're the poor kid. You never should have said it.
Shh, that's okay. So a little background, um, parcel twenty-seven, twenty oh four was approved for twenty-four thousand square feet of office, uh, on April tenth, two thousand three through resolution sixty-eight, two thousand three. Uh, since then, the building has been condoed. There are multiple owners. Uh, there's going to be a law office and a medical office on the bottom floor.
Can you speak up a little bit, please?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Move a little closer to it. In two, gotcha. In twenty-ten, the site plan was modified to convert twelve thousand square feet from professional office to medical office, which is why there's two different offices within that building. Uh, the location is generally southeast of the Gardens Mall, just north of PGA Boulevard. Uh, our petition tonight is to strike condition of approval number eight of resolution sixty-eight, two thousand three, and that condition states that no additional wall signs, including ground floor tenant signs, shall be permitted on the building. Obviously, this condition was made seventeen years ago, and a lot of things have changed, uh, so removing condition number eight will allow the existing medical office to request a sign permit to install a ground floor tenant sign for the purposes of business identification. Uh, staff supports this request, and it is important to note that this sign would be, uh, completely code compliant, uh, if not for this condition. Uh, this is the proposed sign for the building, um, and it meets all codes within the City of Palm Beach Gardens. Uh, no waiver is needed for this request, and as I said, without condition number eight, this would be a pressable sign. So with that, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. Thank you very much for your time.
Nice first job.
Thank you. Um, does anybody, well, we'll, um, is there a staff presentation?
No additional staff presentation.
All right, thank you. There's no cards on this. Uh, so we'll close the public hearing. Can I get a motion and a second to approve?
You're on me for motion.
Matt?
Second.
Maria? Any discussion questions for George? George, right?
Yeah, I do have to discuss the fact, uh, the sign down and down, they are handling our wills and trust, but I don't believe that that creates a conflict.
No.
Okay.
No, it does not.
Thank you very much.
Any other, uh, any other questions, comments? Rochelle, you look like you're thinking. All right. Carl, you got any questions, comments?
Pretty simple stuff. Good job, though.
Thank you.
Maria?
Nope, good.
All right. Well, I got nothing to say as well. Thank you very much. It seems like a very simple thing to improve the business climate here in the city, which is what we all want to try to strive to do, especially little things like this. So, um, kind of without any further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, five-zero. Thank you very much.
Nice job. Step it up next.
Okay. So that concludes our majority. Is there any resolutions?
No.
Any resolutions to discuss?
I do have items for council, though.
Okay, any council action or discussion? Anybody want to talk about anything?
Actually, I do.
All right, Maria, go.
Okay, I have two things. Um, Palm Beach State College, guys, thank you very much for being here. We appreciate your, uh, investing in our community. Second, um, I have been attending the Loxahatchee River Management Coordinating Council meetings, and the city has not had a representative since David Levy, so I would like to be appointed as the elected official representing the City of Palm Beach Gardens.
Does anybody have any, uh, reason not to, um, have Maria join another board?
Loxahatchee River. The meetings are in Jupiter.
Actually, I think it's a good idea that you go. I think it's a good idea that we have someone from the city there, especially as things are moving around out in the western end of our city. So, um, who better than Maria to serve on that committee? And Rochelle, would you like to be the alternate?
I definitely would.
Wonderful.
Probably.
Where's Dave?
See what happened to Dave?
He retired.
Okay.
So do we need to make a motion on any of that? Max?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so can I make a motion and get a second for nominating, can I finish the motion?
Sorry, I thought you were.
Nominating Maria, uh, as, as the representative on the Loxahatchee?
Loxahatchee River Management Coordinating Council.
And Rochelle to be the alternate.
Motion.
Second, anyone? Matthew, would you like to ma, you can't second.
You can't second.
Oh, that's true.
Matthew, a second, all right. So all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Pass this five-zero. Any other comments and discussions?
No.
Rochelle, do you got anything?
The race for the cure is on Saturday, the twenty-fifth, sixth, whichever that Saturday is that week, for Coman. What's that, twenty-fifth? It's the twenty-fifth, and, um, so I'd like as, as many people as possible, if anybody's interested in getting a team together and, and doing that, uh, for the city, will walk together or run.
I'd love to. I'm going to be out of town that weekend, but enjoy without me.
Where's it at? Flagler again, okay.
Um, any other comments or discussion from the council? Max, do you have a city attorney report?
Uh, very briefly, Mr. Mayor. Um, I've, I spoke to each of you this, uh, about this during your agenda reviews, and I, I called you before I did it each individually, uh, just to let you know, um, what we were planning to do. As, as you're aware, we received a letter from Transform Operating Stores LLC, uh, Doing Businesses Sears and Roebuck, demanding that we, um, uh, schedule a pre-meeting and, and process an application that they submitted to make amendments to the, uh, Palm Beach Gardens Mall PUD. Um, currently, at, at the time of receiving that letter, Forbes and Cohen had already filed a lawsuit against Transform Operating Stores LLC, Doing Businesses Sears, seeking declaratory relief to determine their rights under the, uh, the lease between the two of them, um, what, to determine whether or not Sears has the right to submit the application or not, or whether or not Forbes has to approve it, or, or whether they have to, they can withhold consent to, uh, amend the PUD. Um, they're basically, by the letter, demanding, they're trying to pull us back into this lawsuit. So rather than being pulled into their lawsuit, um, after consulting with, uh, my assistant city attorney and the city manager, um, we decided to file our own lawsuit to sue Transform, uh, Transform Operating Stores LLC on behalf of the City of Palm Beach Gardens to have the court determine whether or not we have to process the application. Um, I believe that that was the, the right thing to do and the smartest thing to do to, um, help keep us out of their lawsuit. My, my intent is to, uh, at some point in the future, um, we've got some different strategy that I've discussed with each one of you individually. I don't really want to talk about here on the dais, um, that I believe will forestall further costs in litigation, even though we've initiated a lawsuit. So what, um, normally I would not have done this without a council vote, but time was of the essence. Um, and so what I'm asking for tonight is your ratification of that lawsuit on behalf, and I would need a motion and a vote ratifying the, the filing of that lawsuit against Transform Operating Stores LLC.
So I think the goal for all of us is to try to not be engaged in a private entity with another private entity if we can. I'm not an attorney, but I am taking the attorney, city attorney's word on it. Does anybody have any questions or comments?
And I, also, I did leave, I'm sorry, Ms. Mayor, I did leave one thing out. I, I just, just so you understand, I did also, I sued, we, we did sue both Transform and Forbes. Um, and the reason we named both of them is because they're both impacted by the, uh, documents, and so they should both be parties. So I want to, you know, it wasn't just filing it against Transform Co., it was against both entities, so that we can hopefully get that resolved.
I will make a motion.
Can I get a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Pass this five-zero.
Thank you very much. That concludes my report.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, I think that's the end of our agenda, so, uh, good night, everyone. Thank you.